Welcome everyone to our April 21st, 2021 Commissioners Meeting. We are joined again by our distinguished veteran, Don Bradley, who's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and we have a newcomer today. We look forward to welcoming Sharon Gardner from Baha'i Faith, who will lead us in the invocation.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh thou kind Lord, this gathering is turning to thee. These hearts are radiant with thy love. These minds and spirits are exhilarated by the message of thy glad tidings. O God, let this American democracy become glorious in spiritual degrees, even as it has aspired to material degrees, and render this just government victorious. Confirm this revered nation to upraise the standard of the oneness of humanity, to promulgate the most great peace, to become thereby the most glorious and praiseworthy among all the nations of the world. O God, this American nation is worthy of thy favors and is deserving of thy mercy. Make it precious and near to thee through thy bounty and bestowal. Abdul Baha.
Okay, next we are gonna have a proclamation regarding Conservation Week. So I'll turn it over to Commissioner Smith. Mr. Hope, sorry.
I'll be happy to read this proclamation. I know Jeff Hill's here from our Conservation District. After I'm finished, he can come up and say a few words. Proclamation, Conservation District Week, April 18th through the 24th, 2021. Whereas, Conservation Districts are local units of government established under state law to carry out natural resource and management programs. Conservation Districts work with landowners and local governments to help them manage and protect land and water resources on private and public lands. Conservation Districts are created in PA in 1945 in response to the Dust Bowl of the 1930s to improve soil and water conservation. Each county in Pennsylvania has a Conservation District except for Philadelphia. Local municipalities rely on Conservation District staff to plan development in a way that conserves and protects local environment. Districts also work with many partners, including government agencies, private organizations, businesses, and others to accomplish their mission of helping landowners to conserve natural resources. The districts are each led by a volunteer board of directors with farmers, public members, and a member of county government, which identifies local conservation needs, decides which programs and services to offer, and develops a strategic plan. Now therefore be resolved that we, the Commissioners of York County, Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim April 18th through the 24th, 2021, as Conservation District Week, commemorating the great work accomplished by PA's 66 Conservation Districts. Given this day in York and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania on the 21st day of April in the year of our Lord, 2021, and it's signed by the Board of York County Commissioners. Congratulations. And Jeff, if you'd like to come up and maybe say a few words? I'll bring this down to you.
So for those of you who haven't met Jeff, Jeff Hill is the new Director of the Conservation District. Mark Kimmel retired after 35 years of service to the Conservation District, so.
Yeah.
Welcome to your first Commissioners Meeting.
Yeah, this is kinda interesting. Glad I could come in, and I'm glad you guys could help support us in this venture for the week. It's great to have the support from the county. The Conservation District spends a lot of time on education outreach for the residents of the county and hoping to improve water quality. And nothing like Earth Day here coming up this week too, to support, so, thank you.
Great.
Thank you very much.
All right, if we could move on to item number five?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through H as listed below.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number six.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the prison and ESCO Effort of Pennsylvania for annual licensing of all security cameras, which includes tech support and software updates for a total cost of $17,733.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number seven.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the Information and Technology Services Department and Global Data Consultants LLC, Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, for 15 Microsoft Surface Book laptops with a three-year warranty and accessories for a total cost of $34,279.65.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number eight.
I make a motion to approve a purchase between the County of York on behalf of the Information and Technology Services Department and Momentum ECM LLC, Mechanicsburg, Pennsylvania, for document management, software licensing, maintenance from June 26, 2021 to June 25, 2022, for a total cost of $100,088 under a PA Co-Stores contract.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number nine.
Make a motion to approve a contract agreement and HIPAA Business Associate Agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Area Agency on Aging Department and Alexandra N. Neusbaum, Lancaster, Pennsylvania, to provide dietitian consultant services for a total cost of $6,000 for the period of April 21st, 2021 to June 30th, 2021.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 10.
Make a motion to approve the submission of a grant application on behalf of the District Attorney's Office to the Fairhouse Subs Public Safety Foundation, Jacksonville, Florida, in the amount of $24,861 for the purchase of 13 new tactical vests.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. I do have, Kyle King normally joins us when these motions are up. He's unable to be here today, so on behalf of Kyle and District Attorney's Office, the funding seeking approval in this motion is to purchase 13 new tactical vests. Due to the nature of the work of the quick-response team, it's critical that the team members have the proper tactical equipment to protect themselves from injury and death in the line of duty. So that's the background on this motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 11.
Make a motion to amend a professional services agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Facility Management Department and New Tech Design, York, Pennsylvania, for the schematic design, design development, and creation of construction documents for the next phase of renovations to the PVR facility for a total cost not to exceed $130,700.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I know, Mark, and I know this is Scott's motion, but this is to move forward with the new purchase of the building for future use for county.
Right.
Yep.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 12.
I make a motion to approve a master services agreement between the County of York on behalf of the Information and Technology Services and Global Data Consultants LLC, Chambersburg, Pennsylvania, for information technology consulting and support services.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 13.
Motion to approve a waiver of the 60-day public comment period regarding transfer of the PA DEP general permit from Jesse Barrow Incorporated to Denali Water Solutions LLC.
Our second motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 14.
Motion to approve the appointment of April Cooper of Stewartstown to the York County Agricultural Land Preservation Board, representing citizens at large for a three-year term effective May 1st, 2021 through April 30th, 2024.
Our second motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 15.
Motion to approve the appointment of Alexandra Chierottini to the York County Industrial Development Authority effective April 21st, 2021 through December 31st, 2023.
Our second motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 16.
Recess for the purpose of holding a public hearing on adoption of ordinance 2021-02, terminating the York County Hospital Authority.
And do we have somebody from the Economic Alliance?
Doug, can you second it?
Yeah, our second motion.
Have a motion and a second. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so we will recess.
Right.
Is there anyone here to present on this?
Is somebody here to talk about? Kevin, can you?
Sure. Thank you Commissioners. Before, it is a motion to essentially dissolve the York County Hospital Authority. This authority was created several decades ago. It was a single-purpose authority for the purpose of bonding for healthcare centers. Those bonds have now been effectively paid off, and since the creation of the Hospital Authority, the county had created the General Authority of South Central Pennsylvania, which can effectively do the same type of financial instruments and bonding, tax-exempt bonding. So for the purpose of any future health center bonding, the General Authority can do it, and the Hospital Authority has determined it no longer needs to be in existence.
And the people on this board or on the other board that were actually?
Correct, yes, yeah. It's the same members of the General Authority that serve on the Hospital Authority.
So healthcare needs in York County who need a debt issuance or bond financing and a debt tax-exempt capacity can through?
Can still go through the General Authority and actually have since. For many years now, we've used the General Authority as that bonding agency versus the Hospital Authority in an effort to eventually, when the bonds pay it off, dissolve it.
Okay. So we're reducing the size of a little bit of government.
One less authority.
One less authority.
Is there any public comment regarding this? Okay, hearing none, I will ask that we reconvene the Commissioners Meeting. So we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion?
Actually, Julie, I'll need to read 18 because I think that ties into.
Thanks, Ron. Okay.
So, item 18, motion to adopt ordinance 2021-02 approving the certificate of termination submitted by the York County Hospital Authority and authorizing actions to effectuate the termination of the authority.
Our second motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 19.
Motion to approve the check register for the week of April 14th, 2021 totaling $11,254,969.31.
Our second motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I know Mark is a little high. This is, we give a pension payment?
Yes, this check run actually includes the $7 million transfer to the pension plan to complete the annual required contribution to the pension plan.
Good.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item number 20.
Motion to approve the check register for the week of April 21st, 2021 totaling $13,761,241.67.
Our second motion.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mark, this is a little high also. What's this?
This one includes $5.4 million that was collected by the Tax Claim Bureau that's being distributed out to the municipalities and school districts throughout the county.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. There were an executive session related to personnel matters at 911 between our last meeting and this meeting, and we'll move on to other business. I know we have a bunch of guests here today. We love it to have guests here at the Commissioners Meeting. First up are representatives from the Susquehanna Area Regional Airport Authority. And if you wouldn't mind just introducing yourselves when you come to the mic, so folks that are watching know who you are.
Thank you Commissioners. My name is Tim Edwards. I'm the Executive Director with the Susquehanna Area Regional Airport Authority. We're glad to be here this morning. I also want to introduce Tim Tate, who is a member of the Authority Board, and also Jimmy Anderson, a member of the Authority Board. Also with me today is Rebecca Burke with Delta Development. We work with Delta Development on any public funding issues. And with Delta also is Maggie, and I forget Maggie's last.
Yeah.
McGinn. So again, thank you for having us, and the purpose of today's presentation really is just to kind of bring you up to speed on the status of the activities that the Airport Authority. Of course, the County of York has three representatives to the airport, the Susquehanna Area Regional Airport Authority Board, two of which are here today, as I've already introduced. So, and this is a quick 10-minute presentation, mostly here to answer any questions you may have as it relates to the airport or any ongoing activities. First slide. All right, just a quick introduction on the Airport Authority. It is a multi-municipal authority that manages and oversees the operations of Harrisburg International Airport and three general aviation airport facilities located in central Pennsylvania. I'll have a little bit more about the other three airports later in the presentation, but in addition to Harrisburg, we have Capital City Airport, located in Fairview Township. Gettysburg Regional Airport is part of the Airport Authority, and also Franklin County Regional Airport. Also under the Municipal Authorities Act, the SARA, we call it SARA, is an independent entity governed by the Board of Directors. The SARA Board members are volunteer community leaders appointed to staggered, staggered five-year terms, which includes three counties, Dauphin County, Cumberland County, and York County, the city of Harrisburg, the city of York, Fairview Township, and Lower Swetara Township where HIA is located. Just some data as it relates to HIA. We have five airlines, United, American, Delta, Frontier, and Allegiant, providing service, non-stop services to 15 destinations and hundreds of connecting points. If you're connecting through Atlanta, connecting through Charlotte, or connecting through Chicago, basically, you can get anywhere in the world. And we generate approximately $25 million a year on car rentals, food, news, gifts, and $8 million from parking activities, of which $725,000 in taxes goes to the Middletown Area School District, the Lower Swetara Township, and the Borough of Middletown. Now, those numbers are from 2019. 2019 was a record year for the Airport Authority, for Harrisburg International. Last year, however, of course, as we all know, unfortunately, was a record year as well, a record in the lowest number of passenger inflaments that we've ever recorded. So we were down for the year-end 2020 approximately 58% versus 2019. We are starting to recover a little bit, a slow recovery. We're seeing mostly leisure travel return, and that's been recovering at a pretty steady rate. However, you know, business travel is still quite depressed, and international travel is just discontinued altogether for now. So 2019 was a record year, 2020 was, we suffered quite a bit, as did every airport in the country. Harrisburg International is home to more than 60 companies and employing approximately 1,700 full and part-time employees. We handle approximately 50,000 aircraft operations a year, and aircraft operation is either a takeoff or a landing, and serve more than 1.5 million passengers. Again, that was 2019 numbers. Since 2015, more than 40 million has been invested in private companies, the HIA campus, generating more than $200,000 in property taxes. The most significant of that development was the Fairfield Inn and Suites, 120-room hotel that opened in 2018. So that was a nice improvement at the airport, and does get quite a bit of use, even throughout the pandemic. HIA is part of the FedEx, UPS, and DHL Global Air Cargo Network, and accommodates more than 100 million pounds of air cargo each year. Cargo was the one area of activity at HIA that actually grew last year. We finished the year approximately 8% ahead of where we were in 2019. So with all the online purchases and e-commerce, the cargo activity is really doing well. As a matter of fact, we have DHL. DHL was here kind of on a seasonal basis. They are coming back on a more permanent basis, I believe sometime in the middle of May for regular operations. Just some notes on the key facilities. The airport itself is about 750 acres. You can see on the slide, and I'm gonna step over there. It's a single runway system, but it's bordered by the Susquehanna River and the railroad tracks. So there's very little room for expansion, just because we're wedged in between those two features. So it's, we do what we can to generate as much revenue as we can from the property we have, but sometimes it's difficult. We are home to the PA Air National Guard, which operates the 193rd Special Operations Wings, and they're at the east end of the airport. We have several general aviation facilities that include AvFlight, Harrisburg, which is a fixed-based operator. We have Select Medical. We had Rite Aid. Rite Aid has closed their corporate flight department, and Piedmont Airlines, and ground transportation services as well. And I'm gonna step over to the slide one more time. I just wanted to highlight this area here. This is our cargo apron, and this area of grass is where we are planning to expand the cargo apron. And I have another, a slide that highlights that, but that's gonna be our next significant multimillion-dollar project. I did want to mention also that typically, or ordinarily, the Airport Authority is self-sufficient operationally, and we have our own fire department, our own police department, our own water and wastewater facilities. We have our own engineering department, marketing, and IT is all done in-house with Airport Authority staff. I mentioned the cargo apron, and just some follow-up on that. It's the Airport Authority's next significant multi-year capital improvement project. It is a $64 million expansion of the air cargo complex, which will increase capacity by 30%. And that's the one area, as I mentioned, where we have had significant demand for additional capacity. It was, been part of the plan since 2016, when we updated our master plan, and it's, the project itself is broken into two categories, one being landside, which is located outside of the air cargo fence line, which is where vehicles are parked and cargo is processed and so forth. And that includes a roadway reconfiguration, taking down two old Air Force buildings that have been there since early in the 1900s. And the airside component, which is basically that part of the airport, which is accessible to aircraft, including the runways and taxiways and aprons. The airside portion of that project is the most significant. That's gonna be approximately $54 million, somewhere in that range. There's a lot of stormwater work that needs to be done, and a lot of, a lot of extra work outside of just putting down some additional pavement. We have, with the help of Delta Development, successfully developed a funding strategy for each component of the development plan, and, which includes state, local, and federal funds, primarily from the Federal Aviation Administration through the Airport Improvement Program, United States Economic Development Administration. PENDOT Bureau of Aviation has provided some grant funds, Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. Of course, the Airport Authority provides its own match, and a private cargo handling company. We do expect with the cargo expansion, there'll be some interest in private development. The next slide just highlights the local and regional impact of the cargo expansion, and again, it's that area that's highlighted in orange. We expect, once it's completed, we'll be able to park and accommodate three heavy-type cargo aircraft, which will be great. It will enable more than $50 million in airside investment, primarily from the FAA, facilitate a 30% expansion of air cargo operations, generate 529 temporary construction jobs while it's under construction, and create 354 new permanent jobs, which will infuse an additional $23.2 million annually into the local economy. And also, we expect we generate almost $50 million in landing fees over a 20-year period for the, as the cargo ramp is expanded. Just some emergency operations initiatives. I mentioned, I believe that we have our own fire department that provides aircraft rescue firefighting services. We have worked with various counties that represent the Airport Authority. In 2019, we received funding through the Dauphin County Local Share Grant, which is part of the casino money, gaming money, in the amount of $100,000. So we were able to purchase with that money a new mini pumper. 2019, we did an equipment retrofit on one for our aircraft rescue firefighting vehicles, which use a firefighting foam that, per federal regulation, contains PFAS, if you're familiar with that term. It's a chemical that gets into the groundwater and stays there basically forever, and that's an issue that we'll be facing going forward. And just recently, another gaming grant through the Dauphin County Local Share Program in the amount of $22,000 for some improvements to the fire station. I did mention the general aviation airports, and Capital City Airport is, was our first GA airport that was part of the Airport Authority that was, that was combined with HIA when the Airport Authority was established. It was acquired by the Airport Authority in 1998, and it's the choice, airport of choice for several state agencies, including the Governor's Office, the Pennsylvania State Police, and the Pennsylvania Office of the Attorney General. Lots of flight activity, or flight training activity takes place at Capital City Airport. So it's a nice reliever airport for HIA. Gettysburg Regional Airport, it's about 59 acres, a fairly small utility-type airport. It was acquired by the Airport Authority in 2006. It was basically privately owned, and the owner of the property was going to sell it to a residential developer, and the FAA did not want to lose the aviation asset in Adams County. So working with the FAA, we were able to acquire that and keep it part of the, and keep that aviation asset viable. And then Franklin County Regional Airport, kind of a similar situation. It was owned by Franklin County, and they wanted to get out of the airport business. The county, the FAA did not, again, want to lose the aviation assets, so they approached SARA, and SARA was agreeable to acquire that as a public entity. Lastly, I want to say thank you, and we are here to answer any questions that you may have. I know your team from York County has been a great asset to our, to the Airport Board and the success, except for last year, but the success that we've had for two decades now since the Airport Authority was established. So again, thank you for your time.
I have maybe two questions.
Yes, sir.
One, I know you talked about 2020, and for all small businesses, economics was not good, and you were down like 58%. Just talking in general terms, how's your overall budget status and moving forward with major projects and stuff? Are you comfortable with your financial position?
Yes, we were, we were fortunate, as were all commercial service airports, to be part of the CARES.
Funding.
Program funding. So airports in general got, commercial service airports got $10 billion out of that program, of which we were awarded $10 million, which allowed us to continue to pay our debt service. We have, of our 30 million budget, approximately $11 million each year goes to pay debt service, so that's a significant obligation. And so we were able to keep up with that through the, through CARES, the first CARES program, and also with the Coronavirus Relief Act that was approved at the end of 2020. Airports received another $2 billion, of which 4.2 is, was awarded to the Airport Authority. So with that additional support, we were able to pay our bills and keep everything open and operational. It's unfortunate that we had to rely on that. All airports across the country did, and we certainly want to get past that and get back to the point where we are. back to the point where we are financially self-sufficient.
Good. And the other question is maybe from, just growing up in York all my life and knowing the York Airport, and we have the York Airport here, it's not under your purview, you know?
Right.
So is that something that it's privately owned and maybe someday will be, or we never know, or what?
Well, I, I don't think it ever will be.
Okay.
But I know, I know Mr. Tate is, is much more of
Yeah.
of an expert on that.
I mean, I often, you know, thought about, when you talk about, you know, Gettysburg and Compton, but yeah, but they do provide a good service and...
The reason we got involved with the Franklin County Airport in Gettysburg was because they were not closed.
Oh, okay. Okay.
And they wanted to keep, you know?
Right.
keep the airport open. But the Scurd family is committed to maintaining the York Airport.
Right.
Obviously, we have brain obligations here as well.
Right.
So we have to keep it really for sure the amount of time.
Right. And I didn't say anyway, we should do it. I just, I didn't know, you know? People ask sometimes, you have the Airport Authority, and York is not a part of it.
Right.
But that's fine. Yep. Good.
I just wanted to make a comment. In a previous life, I flew a lot of miles out of H I A, and one of the best things you did for business travelers was create that business lounge. That was just like
Oh, thank you.
a breath of fresh air.
Yeah.
So I hope you, I know business travels down, but as somebody who logged over 100,000 miles annually out of that airport, that was definitely a blessing, so.
No, we have that closed now, only because business activity is kind of disappeared. But we do intend to open that back up as soon as we see, we see that trickle back up. So yeah, that's, that's always been a wonderful amenity that we get a lot of compliments.
Awesome. Awesome.
I often wondered, do you go out and recruit airlines to come in and use your facility? Or how does that work? You talked about five airlines.
Yep.
I'm not sure how many airlines we actually have here in it.
We are recruiting all the time. We go to various conferences where we can meet with airline planners and highlight the specifics of this market, central Pennsylvania, and the benefits to them, and as do, as does every other airport. So it's very competitive and, but we are, we are, except for last year, because we couldn't, we couldn't go anywhere. But we're always very active out on the, on, on the road, whether it's visiting United in Chicago, or flying to Atlanta to visit with Delta. Those are, those are incumbent carriers. So we meet with our incumbent carriers as well to make sure that, that they are, you know, we're close partners with them. We fly to Dallas to meet, to spend some time with American when we get that opportunity. But recently, it's really been Allegiant. Allegiant Airlines has been the big mover and the one that's really created the most activity, because it's all leisure markets, and that has been the first to recover, not only at H I A, but at, but at every commercial service airport. People want to get out. They've been, they're tired of being cooped up. And although businesses are really not allowing their, their employees to travel, people are, people do want to take vacations.
Right.
To nice, warm destinations.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
One other thing, if I could. I think the important thing to say is we're not here with our hands out for money, but we do need your support. So we really, really appreciate the support that you've all given us and our appointments. We all enjoy serving on the board. It's been very, very under our state and I would recommend that.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks for serving.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And we also today have some more distinguished guests with us from the Economic Alliance. I'm not sure if Kevin or Sully is doing the presenting, but to give an update on the hospitality and tourism grant program.
Thank you for the introduction. Kevin Triber with the York County Economic Alliance. I wouldn't fault any of our Sarah guests if they're exiting the room, so I won't take that personally. But here today, give me one second. No, no problem. Here today to provide an update on the CHIRP program, that's the Commonwealth Hospitality Industry Recovery Program. That was created in Act One of 2021. Beginning of the year, the legislature allocated about $145 million to assist the hospitality industry across the Commonwealth. That was designated by NAICS code, which essentially meant restaurants and accommodations, hotels, B and Bs, things like that. About $5 million was allocated for York County, and our organization, the Y C E A, was designated by the county commissioners to assist in the administration of this grant fund. So today is a significant milestone. We're coming to you with recommendations on beginning the award process for this grant program. So I'll move somewhat quickly through some of the behind-the-scenes or the background on the program. This is, we presented many of these slides to you at the beginning of the program back in March of this year. But you'll recall, essentially what I just said, about $5 million was allocated to the county of York, less the organizational fee charged by the Economic Alliance, which was set forth by law. We had about $4.9 million to disperse. The program was not first-come, first-served, but rather based on criteria and scoring preferences that the county commissioners had approved at the beginning of this program. Again, this was all set forth in law. This program was eligible for NAICS code-qualified businesses. So this was for for-profit entities in two NAICS codes, again, hospitality or hotel accommodation.
For the public, when you say NAICS codes, would you explain that?
NAICS code is, it's a industry-standard codification for any industry. So if, regardless of whatever industry you're in, when you file your tax returns, you're designated which NAICS code. I don't know the acronym offhand, what that stands for. National Association of, I could probably make it up.
Right.
But you could Google it, but it essentially is your, the...
In your category of business.
Yes, correct.
Right.
So this was set forth by the legislature that these two NAICS codes, which when I just assume it means industry, so restaurants and hospitality. Eligu, and again, this was similar to the CARES Act program or the restart grants that the county commissioners and our organization administered in the fourth quarter last year, that it was for eligible expenses that were incurred due to the COVID pandemic. All eligible applicants must have had a physical location here in York County.
It's, the NAICS code stands for the North American Industry Classification System.
I was way off.
You're right.
But if you'd given me 30 more seconds, I probably would have nailed it. So again, this was the eligibility criteria for small businesses. This is fine print, but this was set forth in law. So county commissioners, the Y C E A, we had really no purview over this. And this essentially set forth that the businesses to be eligible had to, at the, at minimum, have suffered a 25% economic loss to revenue. This was the tiering of the grant program. The awards that would be made were based on the gross revenue pre-COVID of the business. So again, it went up, beginning, the minimum threshold was $5,000 that could be received by a business, and the top tier was $50,000. So it went up by $5,000 increments, or for businesses that were up to $25,000 in revenue, all the way up to 2.5 or over, 2.5 million or over. Use of funds, already covered this, but essentially set forth similar to the CARES Act, eligible expenses that were incurred due to COVID. And important point is applicants and awardees could not double-dip essentially. So if they received PPP or they received a restart grant through the County CARES Act, they cannot use the same expenses twice. But again, at this point in time, we're, you know, 14, 15 months into the pandemic, so we know that their continuation of expenses were being incurred. These were the prioritization categories that were set forth by the commissioners when we created, when we launched the program. Again, this was not exclusive. This did not preclude other eligible applicants. These were just preferences with the expectation that we would likely receive more applications for funding than we had funds available. The county commissioners, along with Y C E A, set forth prioritizations for businesses who did not receive any other funding, public funding support at this point. So if they hadn't received PPP, if they hadn't received IDOL or the restart grants, businesses were, who were economically impacted, we actually asked them to share information about the economic impact. Again, they would have had to have seen at least a 25% revenue reduction, but we also asked them to rate it between 25, 50%, 75%, or 100% or more, so we could base the financial impact. Businesses who are subject to the closure orders, historically disadvantaged businesses, which is a federal definition of businesses, 51% or more owned by a person of color, businesses 51% or more owned by women or veterans. And again, these were merely funding priorities. This did not preclude other eligible applicants. Again, this was not first-come, first-served, but based on a scoring process, and our organization did an extensive amount of outreach over the course of several weeks. I won't belabor all of these. Many of you participated in business walks throughout all of York County, where we physically went into businesses, handing them information. We hosted several webinars. We had open office hours, all done according to CDC social distancing protocols. We enlisted some volunteers in the community to assist businesses with preparing their financial information, and all of this was made available in Spanish and English. This was the timeline that we had presented to you back at the beginning of the program, so we are right on schedule. These are the ineligibleities. These were set forth in Act One. Again, we did not really have any purview over these, but if a business application was determined ineligible, it was for one of these reasons. Application portal opened on March 15th. It stayed open for 16 business days, closed on Wednesday, March 31st. And since then, our organization and team have been doing all of the underwriting process that came with each of these applications. All told, we received 272 applications for just over $8 million from 47 of our 72 municipalities. Of that, this is the outreach map. So again, that outreach strategy worked, and thank you, commissioners and a host of other elected officials and local government leaders for doing a lot of those business walks, or hosting our staff in their municipal buildings to do office hours. All told, of the 272 applications, 225 were eligible for just over $6.5 million. And just a very quick breakdown, of the two NAICS codes that were set forth in law, about 83% of these applicants came from food service, 17% from accommodation, 32% are businesses owned by women, 34% are businesses owned by persons of color, 8% are businesses owned by veterans, and 60% of the applications receive, experienced 50% or more reduction in quarterly revenues, and 30% of the applicants experienced more than 50% loss of revenue year over year. So all told, what we'll be recommending to you today is awarding $6.5 million to 225 recipients. This is a simple breakdown of the numbers that I just shared. Average grant size would be just over $29,000. So obviously, this presented somewhat of a dilemma. As expected, we were oversubscribed. We received more applications for more funding than we had funds available. $6.5 million for $4.9 million to disperse. So if we were to, only to disperse the 4.9, that would get us to about 180 applications, leaving 45 unfunded, or about $1.6 million worth of need that we would not be able to fund. Those 45 applications represent about 20% of the applicant pool or 26% of funds requested. So if we just funded the 4.9, we'd be basically funding four out of five applicants. But what we're suggesting to you, and the recommendation that we'll make to you today, is to fund all eligible applicants essentially in two installments of their grant award. Because that need is great, and because it's evidenced by the applications that we received, our recommendation is to fund all 225 applicants. Essentially, immediately, we'll be funding 75% of their grant award now, which will fully exhaust all of the CHIRP funds allocated by the Commonwealth to York County. And upon receipt of the county's federal allocation of rescue funds, of which it's approximately $87 million, we're recommending that, at that point in time, we'll fund the balance to all of those awardees of that additional 25%, making them whole, receiving 100% of their award, and encumbering approximately $1.6 million in federal rescue dollars. So again, this is another instance where the county, if approved, will be able to say that you have funded 100% of eligible applicants, leaving no one on the table, so to speak, with the funding that was available, thus maximizing the impact that we can have to the business community. So this is just an example, based on those tiers of grant awards by size of the business. So if you were set to receive $50,000 or eligible to receive $50,000, you'd receive $37,500 now, and essentially the balance of $12,500 later. It is anticipated that those federal funds will hit the county coffers sometime in June, July. So we would be asking for some patience and understanding by the applicants. But obviously, our ability to give them 75% of the funds now, we hope would be enough for them to hold on for that 60 days or so period until we can transfer the balance of 25%. All of these award transfers are being made by ACH, so if approved, we'll be able to move those funds rather quickly. So the next steps, if approved today by the county commissioners, and if you support this recommendation, we'll begin to notify all of the grant awardees. We will still be required to execute grant contracts with them, so this will require still a little bit of paperwork for each applicant, all done electronically. Fortunately, we've been through this a couple times now, so we've, we continuously improve the system. And again, we'll be able to make those ACH transfers as soon as we receive executed grant contracts back. Upon receipt of the rescue funds, we would then proceed to ACH the balance of the 25%. And then, working with county staff and Mark, we do have to do some closeout monitoring and file some closeout reports to D C E D. So essentially, this is our recommendation, if we were to sum it up in the form of a motion, to authorize the award of all eligible CHIRP applicants in two installments, receiving 75% now, and, which will fully exhaust all of the CHIRP funding and the additional 25% to be made upon receipt of federal rescue funds, thus encumbering approximately $1.6 million in rescue funds. Happy to take any questions.
I guess, the one question I have is, when you talked about the original check going out with a contract, which will be for 75% of the possible funding they would get, would that contract cover the 100%? Or would another contract have to go out the second time?
It will all be spelled out in one contract.
One contract.
Yep.
All right. All right. And I guess, you know, Mark, you have a lot of communication, I think, on this CARES funding and relief package coming in, this 88 or 87 million dollars we're supposedly supposed to get. I understand in two tranches, one in June of this year and June of next year.
Correct.
And as far as the restrictions or qualifications of the expenditures, they're still not totally defined, but we're hoping that this is obviously one area where we've been, all government is promoting small business, you know, being, you know, given funding to continue operation and employment.
Yes. They've indicated that the money can be used for COVID-related expenses and lots of...
And loss of revenue. Right. Okay.
Any other questions for Kevin? Did I get a motion?
I'll make the motion here, too. Authorize award of all eligible CHIRP applicants in two installments, 75% now, which will fully exhaust all CHIRP funding and the additional 25% upon receipt of the federal rescue funds, encumbering approximately $1.6 million in rescue funds.
Our second motion.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. It seems like it's the most fair and equitable thing to do, so thank you for all your work.
Thank you very much.
And thank your staff. I know Sully has put a lot of time in, and David has put a lot of people...
Props to our team. They have been consistently working since March of 2020 to assist everyone in York County.
Just one other quick update before we open it for public comment. The commissioners just wanted to give a brief update. We do have an election that's coming up in less than 30 days, May 18th. If you're someone out there who really still wants to vote by mail, we would encourage you to please get your request in. It's a very unique election, especially for York County. So it's a primary election, but it's also a special election. There are 19 of the 161 polling locations that are going to be electing a new state senator. So in, in those 19 polling locations, there's a special election, so anyone can vote in that election. And then also, we have three amendments and one referendum on the ballot, which means anyone can vote for those. So you don't have to be registered in a particular political party to avail yourself of voting for those three amendments and referendums. So just wanted to make sure we continue to communicate what's going on with the election process. It appears that we will begin mailing ballots out as of Friday, so we've, we've had about 20,000 requests for mail-in ballots, a big difference from last year, where we had close to 100,000. But those will be on their way the latter part of this week. So with that, I'll open it up for any public comment.
Hearing none. If I could have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Our motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, and we will move on to salary board.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 7th, 2021 salary board meeting as submitted.
Second.
Our motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve the positions, salaries, hours of work, and... I make a motion to approve the positions, salaries, hours of work, and fringe benefits as provided by existing collective bargaining agreements that were set forth in York County Employee Handbook or York County Policy Manual for the following departments and row officers, with no additional benefits or concessions as otherwise noted, and it's as stated in the internal salary board detail.
Second.
Our motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. If I could make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Our motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned, and move on to retirement board.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting held on March 31, 2021 as submitted.
Our second motion.
Our motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Make a motion to include the following vested individuals on the monthly annuity payment list as listed below. Jacqueline Laux, juvenile probation.
Our motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Make a motion to include the following individuals on the monthly annuity payment list as listed below. Karen K. Belavia, court administration. Randall L. Crager, Jr., prison. John F. Hess, info technology. Robert J. Hudok, prison. Mark R. Kimmel, conservation district. Robert B. Reichardt, prison.
Our motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any executive sessions, Greg?
No, there are no executive sessions. I just wanted to point out to the public that last week was a milestone for us, where our pension plan went over half a billion dollars last week. So we're pretty excited about that.
Great. Lot to be excited about. Any public comment? If I could have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Our motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned. For those watching, thank you for hanging with us, and have a great day.